We'll call the meeting in order. Jennifer, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Here.
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Glavinter?
Here.
Mr. Karaszy?
Here.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Thank you. We're all here. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, we will proceed with the consent agenda as is. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Barbara, second. Jennifer, can we please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
Yes.
Mr. Karaszy?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public? Okay, so there's no public, no public comments. Can I assume, Jennifer, do we have, just so we know, is there anybody on the livestream?
Says five watching now.
Okay. Thank you. Hello to those on the livestream. Next item is staff reports. Kate?
Yeah, so I had my monthly report in there. I did want to mention just a couple other things. I am taking out a couple of days next week. I think I need to go see the Interactive Van Gogh exhibit, which I'm very excited about, and hoping that they are doing like they promised and really limiting and spacing people out. I also wanted to let people know that the village is disbanding the youth commission and the community relations commission to create a new commission. It doesn't have a name just yet, but it sounds like it's going to be focused around, kind of combining the two focuses of the youth and community relations, as well as EDI topics, and have youth representation as well as other representation on it as well. We will, just like we did on these two commissions, have a library representative, so we're waiting to get a little more information on, you know, when it's meeting and when it will be starting before deciding that. So that is kind of keeping in line with the village board's new, some of their new directions that they are focusing on EDI topics and have hired a consultant and are working on things. So that will be exciting, and I will certainly share with the board if any of you are interested in learning more about that new commission. And then I don't really have anything else unless anyone has anything, any questions on my monthly report.
Thank you, Kate. The next item on the agenda are the board member reports.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you do have something?
I was doing that separately for the reopening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were wrong with that, too.
That's my magic. No. So I did, obviously, you could see we are all in masks. We have reinstituted the mask mandate after the CDC guidelines were updated. One of the things that we've been, we have had very minimal negative comments about re-implementing, but one of the things that I've been trying to focus on with people is we've been getting some pushback, like, well, you know, it's a guideline and reminding people that the CDC is not a regulatory authority and all they can do is provide guidelines, and it is up to the local and state health departments, which Cook County has, you know, pushed that forward as well. So just kind of helping people to understand how it all intersects. We are watching things very closely again, as you can imagine, with the start of school and the new guidelines from the Illinois State Board of Ed that only require children to be three feet apart, which started in the spring, but now that it is back, they are now, in the spring, they were still requiring children to then quarantine if someone came in close contact, meaning under six feet, but now they're saying it only has to be under three feet. And so the science hasn't really changed, but I think that they're focusing on getting those kids back. And my hope is that, you know, I know our schools are very safety-conscious and have taken a lot of steps to keep the children safe. Given the Delta variant infectious rate, we are definitely picking back up to kind of where we were previously, but still, in terms of safety protocols and masking, et cetera, wiping things down. We are still planning to do some in-person programming in September, but we're carefully watching the numbers. One thing we did decide to do, we were originally going to do some in-person programs for children under 12, and we are not going to do that, and have put in the plan that we will not do that until a vaccine is available for that segment of the population. It just makes sense. So if, of course, we see huge spikes or things really changing, we will revisit the in-person programs. It was a limited number, and it was very limited capacity, but we don't know how people are going to feel. We don't know, you know, we want to be, we want to keep staff safe. We want to keep patrons safe. And of course, are continuing to work with the other governmental agencies, like the schools in the Park District and the village, so that we can try and be in line with what they're doing. I think the big difference for us, especially with the kids, is like, school is essential. And while I do think libraries in a community are essential, I don't think that in-person programming is. We can still offer a lot of virtual stuffs, take it-made crafts, all the other stuff that we've been doing. So we're back to a fun state of not knowing and keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that, you know, with our high vaccination rate on staff and in the community, that we will be able to keep people as safe as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess no questions.
I have a small question. The decision for, this is really more just about our group, whether or not our board meetings stay in-person or virtual, is that, does that depend on what the governor sort of direction that comes from the governor's office?
Okay, so it's, it, yes and no. So the governor has extended the executive order saying that there is a disaster, which is one of the things required with the amendment to the Open Meeting Act. But it also is a little squishy. So depending on which attorney you're talking to, some might be like, yes, you can absolutely be virtual, and others are saying, no, you really can only be virtual for the stuff, you know, the way it was before. We're hoping to get more guidance. More guidance hasn't been given yet, but I know a lot of boards have switched to virtual, and I don't think that that is, you know, something that are, especially keeping in mind that you need to still give access, right? It has to be an open meeting. You have to give it. So it is, it's squishy. So, but if this board would like to talk about going virtual again, we certainly can do that.
We're definitely not six feet right now.
Yeah.
Or not even three feet.
Correct.
But we're all wearing masks.
We all wear masks.
It is a weird feeling. I haven't been at a table like this.
I was just thinking that, too.
So I mean, we can go back to the auditorium. I know that that wasn't the most comfortable feeling.
We weren't really more, I mean, we were less than, we were closer to the mask.
We could spread it out a little bit more, though. I mean, if we were spreading it, it was more three. So if the board would like to, we certainly can do that.
Well, so if I understand, even if we wanted to do that, we're not fully sure if that's legal or not.
I mean, it depends who you ask, and what they've said is that, you know, we have not gotten any guidance from the Attorney General, right? And it's like, well, you can, you know, local authorities are welcome to interpret things and like this. You know, so I can follow up with our attorney and just see if there's been new guidance. This was a couple weeks ago, so.
And what happens if it, if we do go virtual and it's determined that it is not legal? Does it somehow invalidate anything that we're doing?
We would probably need to redo the approval for the bills, but then, and if someone reports it, we would get told by the Public Access Council that we can't do that. So, so if you like, we can, I'll check with the attorney and let everyone know what that is, and then determine that, yeah. I will, I will just remind everyone that there are two reasons that we can have board members be remote. One of them is if you have to travel for a work-related reason. The other is if you are medically not able to be present and advised not to be in-person by someone. So those are the two reasons that you can be remote for things, and you still have to have a physical quorum present, which means we would need to have at least four people here, but that is something to think about. So I'll.
Question on that.
Yeah.
We could have a rotating four people and other people virtual? Oh, but you need to have medically rest and necessary.
There has, it has to be medically necessary for them to not be able to be here.
So it sounds like for the next meeting, to the extent we are in-person, I'm hearing that people would like to be in a space where we can have more room between us.
It's going to be the auditorium. It's the only space we have available right now. Because we're going to keep the curbside going in Pollock because we know that people aren't going to be, we're going to transition it to, and we know that people aren't going to feel comfortable, and so we want to keep it the way that it is, which has been working. So that means that we're limited on the spaces that we have to spread out. But the auditorium can absolutely work. We can spread people out, right, on the stage-ish.
Yeah.
It worked two meetings ago.
It did.
We were, we were kind of close.
We were really close.
We were like in the quiz show, right next to each other.
I think we were closer than we are now.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
And just for full disclosure, I spend, today I'm spending, you know, five to six hours a day with, in a classroom with unvaccinated kids, so.
And Kelly and Ariel and Jennifer and I work in a public building, so.
And I met my medical team for the first time today. But they're all vaccinated.
Wonderful.
And we're in a big classroom, so.
So why don't I get more information? And I will email the board and then also maybe just do, although it seems pretty, definitely like want to be further apart, and I will also see if people, if we can, if people prefer to be virtual. I'll follow up with you guys if not tomorrow, but next week.
Any other questions for Kate while we're still on the staff report section? Okay. Next item on the agenda is board member reports. I believe there's one board member, Kayhan, who has something to report.
I do. I have some sad news to share with you. This is my last board meeting.
Oh.
I'm moving to a very exotic location in a few weeks called Glenview. And so since I'm leaving the village, I'm moving out of the village, I can't serve as a board member.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so it's.
But you can always come as a member of the conflict.
And I have three minutes, right, to comment?
Correct.
So this housing market was just too good for us to pass up, and we put our house on the market in July, and we got an offer in two days. So we're literally just moving three miles away, but we're outside the village. And so I cannot serve on this distinguished board, which I've really enjoyed for the last 27 months. It's been great. Working with all of you, really loved it. And the timing is actually not terrible because I'm going to start my new gig as president of a professional society in October for the next two years, so my activities will be focused on that effort. But anyway, I just wanted to say it's just kind of bittersweet. I really enjoyed it. I will come back to Northbrook Library, and I may come and make a.
Nice try.
But anyway, but I really do appreciate, and also just such a turbulent time, you know, for everyone through the last 17 months. But I appreciate everyone's collegiality and just working. I think this is an awesome board, and Kate's leadership has been fantastic.
Good luck. That sounds wonderful.
Congrats on the sale, and thank you for volunteering and being a part of the board.
It's been great. This, I mean, this is my first year into public service, and it's been, I mean, a lot of fun, a lot of new things to learn, and this is just such a high-functioning board, which I don't know if you always get.
Well, we appreciate your taking the time to be a part of this, and.
Sure.
We miss you.
Yeah, I'll miss you all, for sure.
Sad time. This has just been a year and a half of no fun. And of course, we will miss Kayhan tremendously. He has promised that he will be on hand to answer all COVID and how long before we can ask questions.
He's going to guide us.
When is it going to be, yeah. You can just do a written update. I'll just include it in the document.
Or you can look on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So Kate was going to give us a little bit of an outline of what the next steps will be to fill a vacancy. We've asked Kayhan to resign effective as of the date when he is selling the house and moving.
Yes, September 13th.
So that, you know, he won't be creating a vacancy until a few weeks from now. And then once the vacancy is open, we'll proceed with the process that Kate can describe to fill the vacancy.
Yeah, and so Abby and Jamie were on the other side of this the last time we had a vacancy. We had two. And so what we will do is we will post essentially a job ad. The board has the full authority to vote on and appoint a member. And so we will put up a job ad asking for applications, which Jennifer and I will then compile for the board. So at the September meeting, you will, we'll have the ad for people to look at and for you guys to make any adjustments to, make sure all that looks good. We'll post it. And then at the October board meeting, you'll review the applicants, determine which ones, we'll go into executive session, review the applicants, determine which you would like to bring in for interviews, and then hold those interviews. We have questions, which will, I'll share with you at next month's meeting that you can look over, and we can revise and update as you would like. And then at the, potentially at the then November board meeting, we would, the board would be able to vote on and then potentially swear in a new, a new board member. We're not going to call him a replacement for Kayhan because that wouldn't be possible. And so one of the things that will, Jennifer will be emailing you about next week is dates that you will be available so that we can let the applicants know when we put up the application, what are, when we'll be doing the interview so that we can just have, I'll get dates on the calendars. Those are done in closed session, but we do have to still post them and do all that fun stuff. And whether we want to do them, well, it'll depend on the other board meeting in person or not stuff, whether we can do them, we have to do them in person or Zoom. So that is the overall, it is planned, the, that we've done previously for other vacancies, not just with Abby and Jamie, but that's kind of been the procedure. I will say that it is rare to have an opportunity to appoint someone. And so one thing I was hoping to get from all of you, whether either tonight or I can send out an email, and, and that would be what, sorry, I'm like, my husband is, John, no, I'm just kidding, is kind of what knowledge, skills, and areas of interest. You know, we are very fortunate in the different backgrounds that our board members hold, and I think that that is a very helpful thing to bring different perspectives and people that hold different identities. And so if there are any particular areas that the board would be interested in seeking out or specific skills that we want to make sure the new board members have or are willing to learn, I know you guys just learned about Kayhan, so this is all a lot of information. Or maybe it would be easier, I can just send out a quick survey saying like, hey, what kinds of things? Like, I know, you know, you know, we want to be representative of the community, so are there areas of the community that we don't feel are represented now that we might want to not say only these applicants, but to encourage applicants from that area? And then we can think about where we, we'll post, obviously, on the website, but if there are particular areas that we want to also solicit. And we will certainly contact the caucus and let the, ask them to let the other candidates that were not chosen, I know we have more candidates than were slated, to see if they would be interested in putting their names forward. So. What is it down there? It is.
Yeah, I know, I know it is. I mean, because after, after two years, you finally feel like, okay, I finally know how things are working, you know? It does take a couple years, I think, before you really feel comfortable on a board.
Good, yeah, that's the luck, though.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. But there's also the Glenview Library Board, right?
Yes. That's what I told.
They're not going to be as cool as these boards.
Well, obviously not. But you could maybe up there.
Maybe, yeah.
So did anybody have questions for Kate, just in general, about the process? It's largely up to the applicants in terms of, you know, who and how many there are, as to how much choice there is and how much opportunity there is to look to some of these areas that Kate's mentioning, like, you know, trying to get people in a community that may not be represented. So if you know a community, know people in that community, and you would like to see them in the board, then you may want to mention to them that there's an opportunity available so that they can keep the word out if they can or, you know, if they're interested to apply. We're always looking for people who are interested in volunteering and have the time and opportunity to do it.
Kayhan just loves the library.
Yes. We like people who love libraries, yes. So, all right. The next agenda item are the unfinished business items. The first is the Climate Action Plan, and I think Kate was going to give us a little bit more information as to where we stand in that process.
So last week, the village board did formally adopt the plan. They are asking all other units of government to also adopt the plan. So I'm going to bring that to the board at the September meeting. And, and then also at that meeting, present you with more with, now that we have a better sense from the village of like what their areas of focus are going to be, how we're going to tackle and partner with them. As I put in my memo, there'll really be two prongs. One will be more public-focused, working very closely with the village on a public awareness campaign, doing more programming like we've been doing for many years now. And then the other side is more the inward-facing of what are we doing with our internal practices, what are we doing with our facilities, how are we helping staff to be more aware? And how can we, as essentially a business in the community, contribute as well? So those will be the two areas of focus. We're working on putting all of that in place in terms of how we're going to tackle that. But I'd love to hear from the board, now that you've had several months with people presenting on the different information, if there are specific areas for the library that you really want to make sure that we focus on, or thoughts that you have about, about moving forward with the Climate Action Plan?
Any questions for Kate?
No, I'm just going to sort of reiterate what I said before, that I think construction provides us a great opportunity to sort of make a difference in the immediate in using recycled materials, recycling construction debris, as well as more long-lasting, doing everything we can that's going to be as energy-efficient as possible. So I think that should be, when we kind of move forward with the next one, that should be a part of our, a part of project, definitely, commitment.
Are there priorities that you see in that list? And how should we or could we be involved in making sure those priorities are?
Yeah. So I think that the public awareness piece is going to be critical. I also think that it is really important to meet people where they're at. If you start shaming people or making them feel like they're horrible humans, people tend to not want to do things. So we need to approach it from a inviting people in to help getting on board and working together. We know that, you know, this is the latest, you know, climate change report that was just out, what was it, two weeks ago? I mean, it's devastating, and we need to do things, and we need to be focused on it. But we also have to deal with human psychology and how people react. So, so I think it's going to be just really critical to not try to do everything all at once, but to take small, measured steps that help build a strong foundation that then help people, because like the easiest way to get people to do things is for them to want to push forward on it. So inviting them in, helping, and this from not just the community perspective, but also from the staff and our library perspective, getting people excited about doing things and then encouraging them to then want to do more so that it isn't coming from us as a directive, but from them as a, okay, yes, we think, we know how important, and we did this, we can do more, and let's just keep building on that. So it's going to start out, I think, small, but the hope is that over time, then, you know, it's like compound interest. It's going to grow exponentially. I do think that a lot of our staff are already very on board with this. I think a lot of this community is very on board with this. But I also know that people like convenience, and so it's going to be marrying that. I mean, I think we've been doing small things for years. Like, we just put out the checkout bags so you don't have to use the plastic bags. And, you know, we've had the recycling. We've been doing composting. So it's building on what we've already done. I do think that, given that we, we haven't really talked about the strategic plan since COVID started, we have a strategic plan. And we're still doing things towards that end. But I do think in light of the EDI work that we're doing and the world of coronavirus and the Climate Action Plan, that there's a lot of village-wide things happening, and it would make sense to revisit that, but just not right now because I do not have the bandwidth to try and tackle redoing that. I think we need to, I don't think we need to wait three years until the coronavirus is done, per Kayhan's sources. But I do think that that is something that we need to think about and, and take a more focused approach. Because keeping in mind, the Climate Action Plan is a 30-year plan, right? This isn't a three-year plan. So, so like, let's start with small things and build on them. So that was a really long way of saying, I don't have a specific answer right now, but I know that we're, we're on a marathon and not doing a sprint. So I'd like to take it slow and easy. Great?
That sounds great. I think when Kate says, take it slow and easy, we should heed those words.
Which means a fast sprint.
Yes.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we can move on to the next item. So the next item is the Illinois Libraries Present Joint Programming Intergovernmental Agreement, which Kate's going to update us from the last meeting as to where we stand on this agreement. And I think there were some questions that Kate has for the board as to our willingness to do some things to help move it along.
So you do not have an intergovernmental agreement in front of you to look at today because we're still working with RALZ on exactly how the accounting piece will work. And until we can, we have that, we have to put that in the IGA. And so the intent is, well, the intent was to have it through you today. That did not happen, but we're, we're very close. And I think that for the September board meeting, that should not be an issue. One of the challenges that we're encountering is kind of a chicken/egg issue. So in order for us to get libraries on board, we need to tell them what programs we're doing and be able to allow people to register so that they want to then join. But then we also then need to have money, which we don't have until the libraries actually join, but they don't want to join until they know what we're offering. And so there's some initial startup costs, essentially the Zoom license and possibly like the first month's programming, depending on when RALZ would be able to do invoicing, where we do not have cash, but we need cash in order to get started. We are exploring some different avenues, and RALZ is considering offering this to us as like kind of a no-interest loan until the membership dues come in from the invoicing. But since libraries have to comply with the Illinois Government Prompt Payment Act, they have up to 60 days to pay, Zoom is not going to care. They're going to want their money in order for us to be able to host the program. So I wanted to get a sense from the board if you would be at all willing to allow us to have some of the costs be paid out from us until they get reimbursed in February or March, by which time we should have the revenues. I'm not going to say that there is no risk involved because, of course, if we don't have enough people, there is always that risk. But based on all of our survey and the directors and staff that I've talked with, I do not feel that this is going to be a huge risk. I do think that we will not have any issue having the membership be sufficient to meet our operating expenses. We were planning an operating budget for the entire year, including Zoom license, all administrative costs and programming costs of about $150,000. We're still working on getting the Zoom license pricing down and think we will be able to. So right now, what we'd be looking at is the Zoom license plus the first month speaker. So right now, what we'd be looking at is the Zoom license plus the first month speaker. And we want to do a really big splashy speaker. The Programming Committee is working on that piece. But we don't have someone set yet, so we don't have the exact price. So we budgeted $20,000. Dr. Kendi was $12,000. So, $20,000 would be like, I mean, like, I can't even think of a name now that I'm here. But, so we would be looking at the cost for that presenter and the Zoom license, and and then, like I said, would be reimbursed in like, February or March. I don't know if this is going to be necessary. I just wanted to put the idea, in case RALZ says no, I'm sorry, we just don't have the cash flow to be able to offer this. Just to see what you think.
So, before we kind of ask the board to pitch in, I just want to make sure we're clear on how much you expect that to be? Because you threw out the number $20,000, I think that was just the speaker fee, not the fee that plus the license.
Correct. And so the Zoom fee, yes, I'm sorry, you're right. The Zoom fee right now, if we get no discount, is about $11,700 for the year, because it's, you know. But, we're talking with the Zoom rep, and based on other pricing we've got from other libraries, I think that we'll be able to cut that in half to about $6,000. So we would be looking at, I would say, $25,000 total, potentially, on the high end, that might be needed.
Assuming you get the discount, so it could be 25, it could be 30.
It could be 37.
And this is money that would get reimbursed, but just not in the short term?
It would be, like, so we would need to pay it out in like, November, and we would get it back by the end of March.
Okay.
The risk, though, is if all of our projec-, if all of my projections are completely wrong, and we do not have enough people participating, then it would, it would mean that we don't have funds. Now, I don't, I don't see that happening. Based on everything, you know, like I said, all of the numbers that we've crunched and the people that we've spoken with. But I don't want to pretend like that isn't something that could happen, because of course.
Let me ask a question in that worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Assume worst-case scenario, there ends up being no joint programming or governmental agreement. And now we have advanced the funds.
Oh.
Hold on, let me go.
We would never advance any funds without the agreement in place, though.
So you're only saying if the agreement is in place and signed by parties, we would advance the fund? But assume still that you don't get enough to fully reimburse.
But like, let's say we only get 30 libraries.
So like, what's the risk? I think that's what we're trying to understand.
I mean, I think the risk could be, say, I mean, it just depends on how many libraries, because we have it set up in tiers. So depending on their operating budget.
So we end up paying more than initially thought, because there's less people in the pool?
Well, we're doing it as a flat fee. So you pay a flat fee to get access to these programs. And so, so if we only get, you know, the estimate based on the surveys we've done, we're expecting about 225 libraries. If that is the case, we will, we will have about 160,000, 168,000 for the year. Depending on which tiers and which libraries we've done, Ariel put together a bunch of projections to look at different scenarios. But let's say we only get, if we only get 37, you know, or 50 libraries, then we would be looking at probably only getting, bringing in about 30,000. Again, depending on the sizes of the libraries and what their fee is. And so then we would be potentially losing like, 7,000. But it could be worse. It could be that we only get a couple. I mean, we know everyone that's on the steering committee and programming committees. So with just those libraries alone, we're looking at about 17,000. So then we're looking at.
I was going to actually go a different place, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So assume that you have a small group of libraries that sign on, and not enough to fully reimburse. Does that mean now that the small group of libraries can still continue to find programming, and then ask other libraries on a program-by-program basis to pay to join on a specific program?
So, the way that we have it set up would be that they would have to have the intergovernmental agreement in place in order to be able to participate in the programs. But if we added something like that in, that we could allow external people to add a cost, because every time we, like, we're doing The Color of Law with Richard Rothstein in September? It's August now, yeah, in September. And Tracy was adamant that she was going to cap it at like, you know, 15 libraries. And we have 30 libraries participating. So, I don't, and interest is so there. But we could certainly add something in that would allow for non-members to participate in programming at a higher fee.
No, I was just only asking in that worst-case scenario, so there's another revenue stream to be able to try and get some of those funds back.
We also, if we, because we would have time before the actual program. So if we found that we weren't getting the membership numbers, we also have sponsorships that we can reach out to vendors and see about getting. We're also investigating an Illinois Humanities Grant to see if that's possible. Because they are now, they're, they've expanded what they're willing to provide grants for, not just for individual programs, but for operating expenses as well. I'm also going to reach out to the State Library, because they have expanded what they're willing to give COVID funds for. And since this is as a result of COVID happening, we're hoping that they could cover the startup costs. So I don't even know if we're going to need to do this. There is a risk, but.
You have a lot of coals in the fire, so to speak, and, okay. So you're not asking us to make any decision now?
I'm just owning the idea, in case, worst-case. I'm presenting a worst-case scenario if I can't get any of these other things to work out.
But you may want to ask in a future board meeting that we approve some form of expenditure, and you're trying to get the board's interest in doing that?
Or willingness.
Willingness, okay. So I guess I would ask if we just go around and ask each board member to, you know, give their thoughts?
Comfortable, I guess. I think there, I think there is a strong interest, and I think there's a strong argument for doing it. I think it's one of the few silver linings to this.
I agree.
Situation.
That if Kate is passionate about it, I don't think she's going to let this not be successful. So, I think she's at a lot of levels. So, I think that all good faith in what she would recommend.
Yeah, I agree. I just don't know if that, like, protocol, do libraries, like, advance monies to things like this? Like, is that something that we've done before?
I don't, it's not something that I've ever asked of a board. Legally, we can. But, you know, I've not ever personally done it, so I can't.
Right, okay, and all the years we've been on the board.
No, yeah, I can like this.
Yeah.
So that's just my, like, sort of hesitation is, why wouldn't we do this? We've never done it. I don't want pushback from anyone, like, if, you know, anyone wants to come to us and say, "What's this all about?", like, what do you, you know?
Why are you spending taxpayer dollars and? Yep, absolutely.
I mean, I, it's not, we're fiduciary, you know, responsible for this. And I'm just literally having offense about that part of it, about the, it's my responsibility, and I don't know enough about it, so I'm on the fence.
Okay, Jamie?
Yeah, I like the idea, toll-free and support, I think it's a great idea. I just, if the worst scenario is presented, like, to see potential laws and the probabilities of those, just a couple of scenarios in terms of what, you know, money, that's, that's all. Just financially, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're not going to be able to vote on it, but do you have some thoughts you want to share?
No, I mean, I think people have identified the concerns. I think, in principle, it sounds like a fantastic idea that, you know, if you get all these libraries to pool their resources and to offer programming that no single library could do, what's the downside, really, right? Because, I mean, no single library is going to be able to afford someone like Dr. Kendi to talk. And, so I think that in and of itself is a huge win. And also the whole accessibility issue. I think that one opinion from one patron talked about the, how she much benefited from, you know, Zoom presence. And, and I have to say that that is, that's an important part of DEI, is just making programming accessible to a wide group of people. So, you know, I think it has a lot of merit.
Basically, I'm going to start, because we can't watch anything.
I mean, I agree. I agree with what you said about Dr. Kendi, I enjoy that. I don't remember anything like that in the past, right? So, but yeah, I mean, I see Sharon's point, too. It was just a little, are we being the fiduciary responsible parties that we need to be?
I have one comment to the morrow, if you want to make some more. So Kate, I like the idea, I'm very pro this whole agreement. But I do think that if we take that step, there's going to have to be some form of promise or notes or other documentation, so we are able to satisfy our fiduciary duty that, you know, we're taking the proper steps to document that there's funds coming, or told back to us. I do agree with what Sharon's thought is, that there is a fiduciary duty, and we need to, you know, in terms of the funds, that's probably our biggest duty on the board, is the safeguarding of funds and making sure they're used appropriately. I do think it's a benefit to the community of Northbrook. And so I do think it's a good use of funds to get this type of thing going. But on the other hand, I do want to make sure that we're not spending more than our fair share.
My only question, this is probably, I'm going to be putting the cart before the horse, does, do things like this work so that there's sort of a sliding scale, so that?
Correct. So, we talked about a lot of different ways to make the cost affordable. So we have 600-plus libraries in the state. Operating budgets, because I pulled all of the data now, and I've been having so much fun in the spreadsheets. The smallest operating budget is $5,000. The largest, minus Chicago, is Schaumburg at 16. And then you have about, you know, about two-thirds of libraries in Illinois have budgets under $750,000. Meaning, right, the other third has budgets like, $750 to $16 million. So, when we were looking at the different pricing scales, we ran a lot of different scenarios. And it's hard to estimate how many programs people might go to. Like, there are, obviously, we're going to have a lot more people than a library with a thousand, with a population of 1,000. So, doing it on a per-seat cost, and someone had already tried that with another program, and it did not go well. So instead, we looked at the piece of data that we knew was accurate across the state, and that is in the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, the total receipts, so the operating budget for each member library. And so knowing that we have these 600-plus libraries and combining all of their budgets together, we know what the total budgets available in the state are. So each person is a, each library is a percentage of that total. Using that, we ran scenarios showing like, what would be the average? What, where did tier, and set up six different tiers based on, you know, groupings of where libraries typically fell in terms of their operating budget. And then determining what average program costs were, running those scenarios for the different ones, seeing what made sense, if we could just do a flat fee, plus, which is what I talked about last month, plus, then a per-cost, per-library cost for each program. And what we ended up finding out was that it actually is easier and more affordable, but ultimately just as effective in terms of raising money, to have the flat fee include both the administrative costs plus the programming. So we're doing, for the first round, we're just going to do the first six months, just to kind of, so people don't have to. And so for a library that is zero, I mean, obviously, if they have a zero budget, that wouldn't count, but up to $250,000, their cost would be $40 for the six months, so $80 for the year. Then for the next tier up, I shouldn't have pulled this up, I want to say it's like, 100. Do you have it easily accessible?
But there is, no, that's, I don't read the details.
And so, so basically, and then the top one, which is the tier we're in, would be $1,150, which is about a $125 cost per program. To just give you a sense of things, I mean, the friends paid for the Dr. Kendi program, but if they hadn't, it would have cost us $1,200. So that one program will encompass half a year's worth of all of these programs. And also give us access, if we wanted to do any other joint programming, to have access to that Zoom license with the 1,000 and 5,000-seat minimum, so that we could do those separately. We're going to offer that to members for a $25 fee. So, so even though it doesn't seem like that would be charging enough to get it, if we even have, even if we just have 15% of the libraries in the state participate, we'll be at about $37,000. So, I can show you guys all the spreadsheets if anyone wants to see them. They're really nice spreadsheets.
We're going to keep our broad view, I think. So does that? Yes, that does, thank you.
But you'll report back to us at the next meeting as to where it stands and whether or not there are any of these other options, or?
I am going to bring the intergovernmental agreement back at that point, because we can approve that without, we should, we'll also know by then, though, yes, we'll know by next month, because we need to move forward. So, yeah.
All right, well, you heard, you know, in terms of.
Yeah, no, this was really helpful, thank you. Thank you for even considering it.
The next item on the agenda is new business. The first thing on the new business part of the agenda is a possible visit to an outside library. I say possible, because obviously with the progression of the Delta variant and COVID, it's up to us to decide if we're comfortable, you know, in the month or two, to do this visit. If we are, we can proceed with it, and Kate will give us some ideas of what libraries she's thinking of. And if things change and we feel that we're not as comfortable doing something like this, then we can always postpone it to a later date when we are comfortable. Kate, would you like to talk about the libraries that you would like to think about visiting?
Yeah, there's three libraries that have had major renovations that I thought it would be nice to see. One is our neighbor, which is Prospect Heights. It's pretty small, but Tiffany and Dan from Product Architecture actually did that renovation. They gutted the whole building and redid it. So much smaller than us, but it's really beautiful. Skokie, which we visited in 2018, just did a massive renovation. And is, that is now done. Palatine, as well, just finished their renovation, so a little bit further out, but not too far. Also, similarly sized, well, their building is a little bit bigger than ours. I think it's 100,000 square feet, but similarly sized to us. Of course, all of that contingent upon what your comfort level would be in going out.
I would just offer that, since Kahan isn't going to be here, or his replacement, or a person who is going to not replace him, you are irreplaceable. But the person who will fill that spot, maybe we should postpone it so that whoever is going to join us can feel a part of the group. That's been really helpful to me.
My, my thought on that, Barbara, is, Kate had kind of thrown out the idea of doing it in the next couple of months, but I agree with you that maybe it's better to do it after that person is able to join us. Primarily because I think we're going to have a lot on our plate in the next two months with respect to doing, going through the application process, interviewing people, with special meetings and the like. And so I think to add this on top of that will, you know, maybe for some of us, be a little time crunch involved in it. And so maybe, you know, we did it, Kate, later into the year, towards the winter. I know that's more of the time we did the visit, which was, was it Crystal Lake, or?
Lake Villa.
Lake Villa. Was it, it was wintertime. Yeah, it was cold out.
It's like Thanksgiving-ish. We always thought it tough.
Yeah, I would have.
Yeah, it was like, November.
Okay.
Went to the Italian restaurant afterwards.
Yep.
So I can put it on the agenda to talk about again in November?
Yeah, but in terms of.
Or just, I guess, seeing comfort level, then?
Yeah, I think that, let's talk about, you know, is there a specific location that people are interested now? And then you can try to kind of come up with ideas on the dates, so we can get a time period where we'll have the new member available, or able to join us. I don't know if they'll be available, but they can be invited to join us.
Well, the ones that we've done, Skokie, Skokie, then we did the collaboratories, then we did Lake Villa, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So is there anything, like, when we did the collaboratories one, we were specifically looking for collaboratory-type stuff, right? When we did Lake Villa, that was a brand-new one. Skokie is just like, one of the largest ones, I guess. Is there something specific that we're trying to see differently, like, maybe a small library?
I mean, I think it's helpful to see, you know, Prospect Heights is our neighbor. They're not our nearest neighbor. We can certainly, you know, do Deerfield or Glenview. Join us, walk through, see your new library. Join us, walk through, see your new library. I just, I think it's always interesting to see, especially with COVID happening, what design decisions people have made. I have not, other than, I haven't been to Skokie or Palatine yet. I've went to Prospect Heights for the ribbon cutting, but the other two I haven't seen. And so I think it would be interesting on the Skokie part to see, like, seeing it before and then seeing it now, what changes did they decide to make as we move forward in the master plan? They did it all at once, but, you know, we're doing it more piecemeal. But like, were there changes that they made as a result of COVID? And how are things looking now through the lens of who we're now living in? I know the director at Palatine has mentioned, like, yes, they did originally plan things some ways and make some changes. So I think that that is, is something that we're going to have to consider as we move forward with other projects. So I, I think any of the, I think it's of interest just to see what is out there and to be keeping abreast of what new, you know, what new things are happening in buildings and not just, like, I do this all the time, but I think it's.
Can I ask you a quick question? So we talked about the Climate Action Plan. We talked about the fact that that's going to start impacting some of our planning and our projects coming forward. I know Maura has expressed an interest in making sure that our projects incorporate some of those concepts. So when you talk about these recently renovated ones, do we know if they incorporate any of those types of concepts?
Well, if you want to talk, the best example for that is Indian Trails, which was one of the libraries we visited for the Makerspace tours. We also could go non-traditional, if you wanted to focus simply on the building and energy efficiency piece, and go visit the new Park District Center, the Activity Center over on Technie.
Are you talking about ours?
Yeah, I don't know if everyone has done yet, but that.
Wait, wait, on Technie?
Yeah, the new, the.
The Activity Center, the Prairie Center, on Technie Prairie.
In Metzburger?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was coming in from the outside.
From, in terms of green design, so they didn't get LEED certified, which is fine, but they did have a nat-zero building. So they do have some interesting design features that they incorporated. And that certainly is, you know, they've got the solar panels and the green roof, and that's cool. They did a lot of that at Heritage Oaks as well. So if we wanted to do like a Park District Day, I'm sure Molly would be happy to go and show the new Heritage Oaks as well as the Activity Center. I know at Heritage Oaks, they have Adirondack chairs made out of recycled milk jugs, which I think is cool. So that's another option, if that's a focus that we want. I think that's a good idea. I hadn't, I should have thought of that, I didn't think of that.
I think especially if we see a spike in COVID and a concern about that, that may be an option to consider. In terms of the libraries mentioned, did anyone have a preference? So what they would like to be, or are interested in?
Maybe Prospect Heights would be nice, it's a little smaller, right? Or like you said, Skokie getting the after would be good, too. So either one of those.
I know you guys are not all like me, that just like go visit libraries in your spare time. So yeah, I think either of those.
But Deerfield just did a renovation, right? Not just.
A few years.
I mean, about 10 years ago.
No, wait, really?
Yeah.
Skokie seems appealing to me, but it's more of a personal, that's the one I grew up going to, so.
And that's interesting, because they actually brought in an architect from New York. So it has a very different look from the pictures.
And both Skokie and Palatine are total renovations?
Yeah, total guts, yep.
One of my former students was, is a library board member at Palatine.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, and she said it's been, yeah, it's been a great library as far as, you know, being a board member. But I didn't know that they just underwent a huge renovation.
They did. And they also had just joined CCS, so our library consortium, because they were a standalone library before. So they, they've, the last few years, not, COVID notwithstanding, they've done a lot, so. Or if you want to stick to, you know, if we want to focus on the kind of building and building efficiencies, I think Indian Trails is a really good example. And that was also done by Product Architecture. And so that is something that we could even invite Tiffany and Dan along with to show, you know, to talk more in detail about how they did that planning, to kind of speak to some of the stuff that Maura has brought up, which might be interesting.
I think he should surprise us.
Let's do this, Kate. In October, how about we do some form of a survey?
Okay.
On both dates and availability and preferences for location.
Okay, and I'll put some, like, specific reasoning on why we should go to each, so you guys can have some, like, I choose you, choose you, sounds good.
And if Kayhan wants to join us, he can be a guest.
100%.
Yeah, I've never been to any of those leprels. I've never been, my wife says the Skokie leper is really just a great leopard. I've never been there.
It's almost as cool as nervous.
Because I'm almost as good as one, yeah.
No, it's, it's a beautiful.
She grew up in Skokie, so she said it's just a real.
Yeah, they have a bookmobile. Never been on a bookmobile before, so.
The next item on the agenda is the closed session, but we don't have any need for a closed session today, so we'll skip that item. Then the 10th item is the agenda building for the next, we, next month's meeting. So we'll have Climate Action Plan adoption. Illinois Library, you said, present the intergovernmental agreement. So Kate will bring back the intergovernmental agreement for us to review and approve, hopefully. We will be talking about the fiscal year 2023 levy, and is Zana going to present an initial draft?
Yeah, so the first draft will be next month, no action needed.
Okay. We will talk about our 2022 holiday schedule, which we usually, if you remember, approve and advance the full year's schedule. We will have an annual audit presentation from Selvin Fox, our auditors. And we will be discussing the next steps in our new board member appointment process. All right, any questions or any other items people would like to ask be added to the agenda for next month?
Are we needing?
I think we're going to have to revisit that, because I think we need three of us.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
What's that?
Yes, our subcommittee.
Our subcommittee for working on my email process.
Ah, well, how about this? Do you have any meetings planned for?
It's the 13th, I think, right?
Yes.
That's after.
Your moving date.
Yes, that's right, our closing date.
Technically, two out of three is a quorum. You can also change the committee to two people or bring someone else.
Sharon, would you like to join the committee?
But just let me know when.
Okay.
September 13th.
We'll have Jennifer send you that. And if it, and we can look at alternate dates if that's not, or it's going to work.
I think it's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
I'm, yes, I'm good that day. Good, I'm into it.
If there's no other items to address or no other items people would like to discuss this meeting, I will adjourn. All right, we adjourn.